Thank you all very much for joining us tonight and this city council specials and regular meetings have been and are being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID nineteen emergency. Welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, April twenty sixth. Call this meeting to order and Krista, if you'd like to call the role, please.
Yes, Councilmember Soltes.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hurdjhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Smomo.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
I'm here.
And Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for that. We will move into approval of the agenda. Please note the amended agenda that was sent out yesterday. We do have a third public communication and then item C six on the consent agenda was moved to new business item number eight. Reagan, do we have any other changes?
Nothing else. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, look for motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved by Beth and seconded by Joe to approve the amended agenda. Call for roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote? I didn't hear you, Christina. Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the agenda. Next up, first item is for public communication is the National Water Safety Month proclamation. And Mr. Poole is here from our Parks and Recreation Commission to accept this. And I thought I saw him.
He's being moved over.
Thanks, Krista. There you are. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. So we actually have two proclamations to for the Parks and Recreation Commission and thank you for joining us tonight to accept these on behalf of Parks and Recreation. The first one, whereas the city of Covington recognizes the vital role that swimming and aquatic related activities play in developing good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people. And whereas drowning is one of the leading causes of unintentional injury and death for both children and adults, according to the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas education on water safety plays an essential role in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas the city of Covington has developed an aquatics program to be proud of, especially with their ongoing commitment to providing water safety education and a safe place to recreate. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim the month of May two thousand twenty-two to be National Water Safety Month in the city of Covington and encourage all citizens to join in this observance by attending programs and pledging to be safe swimmers at the Covington Aquatic Center during the month of May and beyond. And we'd like to hand this proclamation over to you, which we were in person. But thanking you and everybody on the Parks and Rec Commission and also on the entire team at the Aquatic Center. Is there anything you'd like to say tonight? You're on mute, sir.
Absolutely. Appreciate the proclamation and the hard work of the staff at the Aquatic Center. And I know that they teach thousands of children a year how to swim and keep our kids safe in the community. There's a couple of events coming up that are great that they hold April Pools Day, which is at the end of April. Unfortunately, that one is booked and full up, but the summer splash still has a few spots left, which will be June eighteenth and a good opportunity to get out and enjoy the pool and get around water and be more safe.
Well, thank you, sir. A round of applause for everybody that works hard for this, especially at our Aquatic Center. So thank you. Our second proclamation tonight is our Arbor Day proclamation. And whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. This commemoration called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas two thousand twenty-two is the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of this celebration, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and adding beauty to our community. Trees wherever they are planted or celebrated are a source of joy and renewal. And whereas the city council and citizens of the city of Covington are proud to recognize the importance of trees. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day in the city of Covington and urge all citizens and businesses to join us in recognizing the value of trees in our community and commemorate the renewal that this celebration represents. And I also received a letter that we are named the a two thousand twenty-one Tree City again of the USA. And I'll make sure that the letter gets turned into Krista. She does not have a copy of it already and Ethan. But it was nice to see that in my mailbox last week. With that, I would turn this proclamation over to you, Robert. And is there anything you'd like to say about this?
Absolutely. The city has been a great, great community around, around being Tree City. And this marks, I believe, the twentieth year now that we've been able to get that award. So great job to everybody involved and look forward to another great day.
Thank you. And a round of applause for this proclamation for Arbor Day. So thank you. And thank you, Robert, for being here tonight to accept that. And I'll hear your report for Parks later on tonight. Thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation. I see Dana is here from the Covington Chamber. But I also want to state that we have quite a few small businesses who have joined us tonight from the chamber to accept this proclamation in here. And I will read the proclamation first and then I will let you say what you would like to say, Dana. So whereas since the late eighteen hundreds, Covington has grown because of the hard work, dedication, and entrepreneurial spirit of small businesses throughout our community. These businesses are critical to the city's economic development and vitality as we continue growing towards greatness. They are also important to the region and the state. This Covington is becoming a must-visit destination. And whereas the past two years have been particularly difficult for small businesses who have struggled to survive and the customers who have helped so many of those businesses stay open. We appreciate the efforts of our small businesses in following the state's health and safety guidelines and their opening safely for the benefit of their employees, customers, and clients. And whereas we honor and appreciate each of our small businesses, their owners and staff, and appreciate the energy and economic vitality they bring to our community, especially during these challenging times. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim May first through the seventh of two thousand twenty-two to be Small Business Week in the city of Covington and encourage all residents to acknowledge, appreciate, and support the achievements of our small businesses and to shop, dine, enjoy, and spend their dollars locally. And Dana, I'd like to give you this proclamation on behalf of the city council to the chamber, but I would like to add that if it wasn't for small businesses and the foundation that they have, our country and our city would not be where it is economically without them. So it's an honor to give this proclamation to you and for the chamber and please share our thanks and consideration to all the businesses within the chamber for this. Is there anything you'd like to say, Dana?
Thank you, Mayor Wagner, and thank you, council. Really appreciate the opportunity to receive this proclamation on behalf of our small businesses. Really, the proclamation and what you said really says it all. Our small businesses had a particularly tough time and they remain resilient as they try to resume economic vitality. We appreciate all of our small businesses, the struggles they go through and their ability to stay open every day. And as you mentioned, their shoppers, their customers, their clients for helping them stay in business. So we appreciate them. We appreciate all they do to help us continue to support you in growing for greatness. So thank you. And thank you to all of the small business owners and staff and managers that joined us tonight.
So thank you, Dana, and a great round of applause for, again, for the small businesses because, like I said, without them, we wouldn't be where we're at today. So thank you very much.
Could I have one more thing? I apologize. I didn't say this. So this year, we will be celebrating Small Business Week on Thursday, May nineteenth. We're going to have a three-hour Small Business Appreciation event and we will be posting more information about that in our newsletter and on social media.
Awesome. I will be there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a great evening and thank you again to all of the business owners who joined us tonight to receive this proclamation. Thank you for all your hard work. Have a great evening. Next is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. If there's anybody in the audience wishing to address council tonight, please raise your hand. And I see we have a person on the phone and Krista, can you remind us how they can join if they would like to raise their hand?
Yes, for call-in listeners, you will dial star six to unmute. Or I apologize, star nine to raise your hand. And then, once we allow you to speak, then you will do star six to unmute.
Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? If there's anybody in the council or in the audience wishing to address council, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise your hand, there will be a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our council meeting. Thank you. Next is our approval of consent agenda. We are looking at items C one through C five. C six was moved to new business item number eight. So look for a motion to approve items C one through C five.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Christina to approve our consent agenda of items C one through C five. A call for roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote? Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye, is unanimous to approve the amended consent agenda. Thank you all very much. Next is reports of commissions. First up is Arts Commission, Marita. Welcome. There you are. Welcome, Marita.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, council and mayor. All right. So this month, we had Ethan Newton join our meeting, which was wonderful. And he gave us a great update on our utility box wraps. It looks like we are going to be, be able to have the contract for the, well, the contractors bids out by finalized by May, meaning that we can proceed with the call for art by August of two thousand twenty-two. As a reminder, we had to find a new installation partner. The person who did it the first time around has moved out of the area. So we had to go through the proper protocol and do several bids and it took a little bit more time, but we're closing in on that and should be able to get installation happening by September, hopefully to avoid inclement weather, which is an important piece of that process. And then rotating art, you all know that the foundations were installed last year and or actually, once the foundations are completely installed, we can proceed with the call to art. And the reason that we're waiting instead of doing parallel paths is to make sure that everything that's in the call is accurate. We could do parallel paths and then all of a sudden find out from engineers after the fact that we need to move or like alter one or two things in the, in the call and then it could delay things further. So we decided to to do things in a linear fashion, but things are moving forward in that regard as well. So that's also extremely exciting. We had another little bit of a chat about admissions tax, which we know is way off in the future. But we want to make sure that it stays at the forefront and we will continue to look at other cities and as models and see what other cities are doing, especially our our neighboring cities like Auburn and Issaquah and bring potential options to the council to consider in the future. The skate park, I know we brought up this up to you guys in the, in the past or in past meetings and we were looking for the artist. We have not been able to get a response, which has been surprising to me because we can very clearly see he's live on Instagram. But regardless, we can tell that the, it needs some maintenance just for safety precautions with divots and whatnot. We want to make sure that the skaters who are out there enjoying that park are safe. So we are looking into just moving forward with a maintenance plan with sealant and whatnot, just to make sure that the integrity of the art, it may not be restored. But at least it'll be safe. And also, we heard from the skaters when one of our commissioners went out there and spoke with them that they actually kind of liked the, the, the look of the, the art. So we're more, we're more geared towards safety at this point than restoration, but maintenance of the art as well. And then the Covington Place final wrap art on the PSC boxes as well as a mural work. I actually have personally have been in contact with PSC and helping Justin Van Lenschut work through that process and they are vetting our applications right now and it looks like that's going to move forward. And then we also one of our commissioners helped find a muralist in Kent, an art teacher out of, out of Kent named Tom Vogel. And we've connected him with Justin as well and they are working together on a partnership to get a mural painted in Covington Place. So some really fun projects happening on that front. And then I reported last month that we had been, we had been hopeful that we'd been, we would have been able to move forward with the, the port grant. We did find out later that the, that it wasn't going to go through because we need to have a project identified ahead of time. Instead of, you know, applying for money and then hoping to apply it to something later. So that's okay. We can, we can apply that lesson at moving forward with any further grant applications. The Covington Makers Market, we had a booth there with a couple of commissioners and family members there over the weekend. And I actually have not heard how it went, but I was excited because I attended the chamber and was able to meet Dana, who just spoke in person last week. And it sounded like a really fun event and I was excited for it. So I look forward to hearing from Jessica, one of our commissioners, is the one who kind of had that up about how it went for us specifically. But I know she had been working with Pat to have, she put together scavenger hunt for people to come by the booth and pick up a little piece of paper that they could do a little scavenger hunt and then come back around and get a an art supply for extra double interaction with our booth. And hopefully, you know, encourage some new applications. So really excited for that to have happened. And again, thank you, Justin, again, for being our, you're a sponsor for that. So appreciate that. And then twenty twenty-two work plan, Patty had worked very hard on that and she presented the, a draft of that at our meeting. And so she's going to be circulating that so that all of us commissioners can be taking a look and providing edits. And again, I know I mentioned this before, but it's a work plan based on the template of the Parks Plan. So it won't be something completely different. It'll be in the vein of what, you know, the city has already kind of established. So looking forward to presenting that as well. And then the retreat, as you are probably aware, we've had, you know, we have, we're having a few people leave the commission and we're looking for new commissioners. And so we're trying to figure out a date. We're looking, now looking at June, May, June dates. But hopefully, we're, we're trying to, we're hoping that maybe that some of the new commissioners can come in and join on that event as well. So working through that, but still very much on our radar. So yeah, does anybody have any questions?
Jennifer.
Yeah, thanks, Marita. I just had one question about the skate park and curious if the commission has reached out to the former commissioner that coordinated that effort. I understand that I believe they were a teacher of the artist many years ago and so they might have a little bit of influence.
Oh, is it? I, is it Leslie?
Hmm.
Yes, we have.
Okay, and she didn't have class either. All right.
You could try again. You could try again. I didn't know that she was a teacher of the artist. That's, that's the information. I can.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's how we connected. I mean, we, we had multiple artists bid on the project.
Oh, okay.
That particular person she knew personally.
Okay, okay. That connection has been attempted, but I, we can try again.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Marita, thank you very much for a great in-depth report. Appreciate you. And the Makers Market booth for Arts Commission went over very well. I saw a lot of people going in and out of that booth. So thank you. Thank you for coordinating that. Have a great evening.
You too.
Next is Cetus. I don't see Josh or Kalen here. Let's move into the Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission. Bronwyn, welcome. Welcome, Bronwyn. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. And hello, everybody. Um. Okay, so right into this. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you last month. I had emergency surgery last month.
Oh, you okay?
Oh, yeah.
Obviously.
Now, but yeah, but me and painkillers were really good friends and I, there's no way I was going to be speaking to you the day of the meeting. So what happened last month is with us, ECSJ. First thing I want to do is congratulate you all on the ordinance that you passed. Looking forward to Juneteenth and yeah. Congrats to you guys. That's pretty awesome. When I said that at work today, I said, yeah, I'm going to be talking to the city council. Three people said Covington? Really? I said, yes. Like, good on Covington. So, yeah, good job. Um, one of the things that I look forward to doing in our meeting and we just had it added to the agenda is we're going to be talking about how we're going to observe and participate. So even if, you know, don't know what's going to be happening, but we're going to, we're going to, to acknowledge. So last month, we adopted our land acknowledgement for tribal lands. And I just want to say that we encouraged city council to look into it, do the same. We are in the final stages of completing our strategic plan. Thank you, Reagan. And yeah, it's, once we figured out what we were doing, it, it went, it went. So we're going to be going through and then Pat finished passing it this month. Also, a work plan has been developed. So we will be working, working that work plan along with the strategic plan. So make sure that we're sticking to, you know, what we're, what we want to stick to. We will also be talking about this month because last month we decided, yes, we wanted to participate in Covington Days. So this month, we're going to be deciding how because we don't have a lot of months to get it together, but I think we will. And I think it'll be fun. It kind of ties into what I've been, been encouraging the commission to do is I call it the hashtag citizen challenge, you know, to get out there, be a part of the community just as people. And then hopefully, you know, when we show up as commissioners, people go, yeah, you know you. And so that's what we've been doing. I went to the Makers Market as well and spent way too much money, but it was a great thing. I look forward to the next one. And so, yeah, that's what we've been doing with there and just trying to figure out, you know, how we're going to introduce ourselves to the committee or to the community. Sorry, reading my own writing horribly. And so I'm really excited. It's not, doesn't sound like a lot. And even our members are like, what have we done? And like, people, we have done a lot and we're really excited about representing Covington and getting out there. As you may or may not know, we do have our survey that is out and we're getting ready to do kind of a bigger push on that one. It's a really short one. So right now, I think it is still kind of on the Facebook page, but we're, our liaison is going to be working on how to get that more prominent and we're working on ways to get that out there. So when you do see it, please take it and give us feedback. Good, bad, ugly, anything. We just would love to hear what you, what you have to say. All right. And that's it for me. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Hope you all have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you very much, Bronwyn. Does council have any questions for Bronwyn real quick? Okay, Bronwyn, thank you very much and please pass on our thanks to your commission. Thank you. Next up is our Human Services Commission, Debbie Jacobson. Welcome.
Good evening. It's good to see you, council. And so we are, we actually got some fun things done this last, this last month. We're ramping up for the the big push for the application review for this year. But this last meeting, we elected a new vice chair with the retirement of Don Allen from the commission. We needed somebody else to help lend a hand in leading the group and you've entered, you interviewed Jessica Kirkland for the commission. She's one of the newer commissioners. And she is just a vibrant, dynamic, amazing addition to the group. She's been, she's been wonderful. She jumps in and rolls up her sleeves and asks how she can help. She has great ideas and my favorite, she has a lot of follow-through. It's just ingrained in her and I'm just delighted to have her alongside to help lead the commission. And we are, we, we have decided that we're going to plan on doing an outreach event. The commission, there's only a couple of the commissioners from the original Polaris events that we had held where we did outreach, out met community. And it's been several years. It's been, I believe, three years now since we originally did that, which has been almost a almost a full turnover at the Polaris community for our target audience. And speaking with the commission and just getting our feet wet as a group collectively in a non-COVID environment, we decided to stick with something manageable and at a place that we knew that our efforts would, concentrated efforts would really count. And Polaris just hits the marks on all of those things for us. So we are going to reach out to them and our plan is to do what we did before. And we, we grab partners from the other social service programs around the communities, especially the ones that we have given funding to. And it's their opportunity to put their hours in and to help directly right in the heart of Covington and bring resources to those groups. The last time we did this, the response was absolutely fantastic. It was fantastic. And so this will be good for the newer commissioners to be able to get an opportunity in a a smaller environment and impactful one. It's a really great use of our time and we're all very committed to making sure this happens despite the fact that it's an application year. And the grant application reviews, it's that time again. I swear, it feels like we just finished. We're doing it again. It's like elections for the House of Representatives. You like literally get your breath and then you're running for office again. So we are, what we did this last meeting is just kind of explain the process to the newer members. What we did this last meeting is just kind of explain the process to the newer members. I think Jessica is the, the only real new member that hasn't participated yet. And explained how the process works for us. We got a pretty good, solid structure. This is my, I think my fourth time through this process. So we really got it dialed in between me and Julie and, and the commissioners. And, and a way that really helps us all make progress and, and not have it be so overwhelming. You get handed thirty-six applications that are this thick each and. It's a, it's a lot to people that are new and haven't gone through that process. And so it's, it's nice now that we have some experience to. Find a way to explain it and also tackle it in bite sizes that we spread it out over the year. And, uh, this next meeting, we're gonna do a couple of them, just to walk through them and. Help people get comfortable with it as we start the process. Uh, the, we closed that meeting with a huge project. I. We got so much done that meeting and then ended up doing an entire video. I told you last time we met that. We were going to do a recruitment video for the Human Services Commission. We wanted something grassroots, homegrown type of video that talked about what we do as a commission and our, we wanted to do it ourselves. Uh, what we do, uh, whose lives we impact and how, and the type of people that we're looking for, you know, and, uh. Um, we ended up getting it done that night and Jessica took it home and she actually took a shot at editing it together. And we, it's great. It's, it's perfect for what we need it to do and marketing has it at the city and. We'll be sharing that and then we'll all be sharing it within our networks and stuff and passing it around when we, when we need it for, to recruit. Uh, we tried to make it pretty timeless so we could use it over a period of time as well. And, uh. Anyway, so we were pleased to get that done. It was an idea a couple of meetings ago, but it's already been done almost overnight. So. Yeah, anyway, next commission will be focusing on the process with grant applications and. I'm very grateful that we are going to have a new youth commissioner coming on board. Thank you very much. Um. The, I do have some neat news. Uh, Carson, Carson Hermiston had served as a youth commissioner with us. And, uh, ended up, uh, she's going to college and had reached out for a letter, recommendation letter to the Cheney School District. And, uh, anyway, she got a job very quickly. She wanted to be a, a. Parent educator in order to get more hands-on experience with children. She, her goal is actually go to grad school. In order to be a school, uh, psychologist. And, uh, so she really wanted to have that experience hands-on. And so she's just an outstanding candidate. She's ex, she's an exceptional. Human and, uh, is really amazing at making people feel comfortable, children feeling comfortable and helping them feel heard. And I got to work with her pretty closely on some events in the community and I just so impressed with her. And she texted me yesterday and said that she had gotten the position. She was pretty over. She is very excited. It was great. So it's a great stepping stone for her and she was a great asset to us, so.
Well, thank you for sharing that Debbie.
Yeah.
Great in-depth report as well. Uh, does council have any questions for Debbie? No, well, thank you very much. Um, jumping in with your grant application. So good luck with that. And thank you for all the hard work you do with, and your team with that. So please pass that along. Thank you, Debbie.
We love it. Thank you very much. You all take care.
Okay, have a great evening Debbie.
You too. Bye-bye.
Next up is Parks and Recreation, Rob Poole.
Welcome back. Hey, I missed y'all.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So Rob Poole from the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, will be a little shorter than last month's update. We did a heavy lift last month in our meeting. And this month was a little lighter load. Um, first, we received an update, uh, from staff on the, the pros plan for the parks recreation and open space. Plan. You're gonna get, uh, more of that later. So I'll, I'll save everybody's breath on that one right now. Um, second, we worked on revising our own committee work plans. Um, Laura, our committee chair presented the previous plans and we discussed some format and content changes. With a handful of new members, myself included on the committee, we, we wanted to adjust the goals so that we. Uh, made sure that all of us were getting out to the different assets and parks and facilities to get better insight. Of, of what we're really helping oversee and, and, and get some hands-on experience out there. And we provided that direction to Laura and Ethan and they're gonna work on updating our plan for the future. And then. Lastly, we're looking at something that, that we've been trying to do since, um, COVID shut them down and, and challenges with our, our park tour. Where the entire committee can go out and tour a, a handful of the parks and facilities together. Um, we've looked at some of the, the areas of interest being Rainier Vista Trail, Eco Park, Soco Park. And the potential and, and future welcome park. So really looking forward to, to finding a way to get out together and, and see those spaces and. And actually get the committee potentially all in the same place for once. So it would be, uh, an interesting opportunity for us. A brief update from, from the parks group and the staff, uh, mowing. We had our first mowing. So that's exciting. I mean, spring's here, right? We're headed into summer and the sprinklers have been serviced over at, uh, the Covington Community Park. And additionally, we, we got some feedback that the drums had been repaired at the park. So very excited to. Have my kids go out and, and make some more loud noise while everybody's playing. So, um, great work from the staff and appreciate them jumping on, on that repair as quick as they did. But that is the, the brief report from the parks team. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rob. Council have any questions for Parks? Seeing nobody, but thank you very much again for, um, a great report and thank you for accepting the two proclamations tonight. And please pass on our thanks to the entire team.
Well, do. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Planning Commission. I don't see Murray. Is Jonathan giving the report tonight? Welcome, Jonathan.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're having a wonderful day. Our planning commission, uh, report this evening is pretty brief. We did start doing some preparations and forgive me for, uh, making some referencing statements. We started reviewing the, uh, comprehensive plan update for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are looking, uh, not only at, uh, the co- the comprehensive plan, of course, but also the county planning policies. Growth targets and the vision twenty fifty, multi-county plan. Uh, we are. We had a session very much last week, like the one you had earlier, where we talked about how we would like. To, uh, see that process develop. And there was a general consensus among all the planning commissioners. In fact, I'm sure it was unanimous. That they wanted to see a lot more public involvement with these updates. Uh, and we began actively talking about some ways we could get some more public involvement. Um, it's, uh. Difficult to get people excited about the planning commission, as I'm sure some of you know. Um, so we're, we're looking for ways that we can actually get the public more involved in that. Comprehensive plan update that we're gonna be doing in twenty twenty-four.
Perfect. Thank you, Jonathan. Does council have any questions for Jonathan and the planning commission? Jonathan, thank you very much for coming tonight and giving an update. We greatly appreciate that and please pass on our thanks to the entire planning commission.
Thank you, sir. Everybody have a wonderful night and, uh, hope you get some, uh, get to, get some rest. Hope you're not here too late.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Uh, next is Youth Council. I do not see anybody here from our Youth Council tonight. So we will move into. New business item number one, which is to consider an appointment to the Arts Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight?
I would like to nominate, uh, Sean Tim to, uh, the Arts Commission. I did not look to see which position.
We have a second. So it's been moved and seconded to appoint Sean. Tim to fill position number one for a three-year term on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, and thank you for, uh. Saying all of that for me. Um, yes, uh, Sean had a great interview. I was really, um, intrigued and. By his, you know, continued mentioning of art as engagement with the community. Um, I think with his, um, experience and, and passion for the arts and, uh, vision for just even increase. You know, increased engagement, um, and integration of arts into our community. He'll be a great addition. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Christina, you were a second.
Sure. Uh, I also appreciate, uh, Sean's very broad approach to art. Um, and that he, uh, just stated that he wants to be available, uh, specifically. To be a comfort zone for artists who are maybe more on the shy side, who, um, who are not public. And I would love to see that. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to speak for the motion. I think one of the thing, well, he, he had a lot of really great one-liners in his, that, that really just hit home. But, um, I think the one is, um. Making, using art to make Covington a place for people to come and be celebrated. And I thought that was really, really special. And something that would set us apart as well.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, seen nobody raise their hand. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Sean Tim. To fill position number one for a three-year term on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. I'll call for roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote? Jennifer, how do you vote?
I.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I also vote I as unanimous to appoint Sean Tim to fill position number one. Thank you. Next up is new business item number two, presentation of the Parks Recreation and Open Space Pros Plan. Ethan.
Yeah, good evening, uh, mayor and city council. Uh, as you know, over the past year, uh, we've been working with consultant Tom Beckwith. Uh, to develop, uh, uh, Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, um, which is an update of a six-year plan that the city does. Uh, the proposed pros plan was included in your council packet tonight. Uh, and it serves to support Parks Recreation and Open Space items that the city, uh, currently does, uh, or may do. Uh, it is important to keep in mind that, uh, the plan itself, um, while it does provide some implementation strategies. Uh, the plan itself does not obligate the city to anything. Uh, Tom, Tom will be giving a second of two planned presentations on the pros plan tonight. Uh, and then following tonight's presentation of the pros plan, uh, we will bring this back to the council for formal adoption through a resolution. Uh, at the next council meeting, uh, which would meet the requirement, um, in place by the state so that we remain eligible for grant funding. Uh, and with that, I will turn it over with Tom for the presentation.
Okay. There, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, um, the last time we kind of covered what the plan wanted to do and tonight we want to cover some of the, uh, questions about cost. And some implementation financing strategies. One of the questions we're usually asked is how do we value, uh, how do we value what you have in place? We tend to use market replacement, uh, estimates. And this is an example for picnic site for twenty-five tables. You can see items A through L are all the construction requirements to put, uh, a picnic facility in of this size. And then items below that A through D are what we call soft costs. The sales tax, the design fees, the financing costs, the contingencies and so on. So if you were to develop a picnic site from scratch for twenty-five tables, it costs potentially a million dollars in today's market, not including land. And if we were to prorate that per table, it's about forty thousand. Now, keep in mind, if you look at the items from A to L, there's everything in there, parking and utilities and. Uh, some amenities besides just the picnic tables themselves. Now, if you were to put a picnic table in an existing site, it wouldn't cost forty million dollars if you had all the items from A through L in place. It would cost you whatever that picnic table would cost, approximately thirty-two hundred dollars, not including labor. But for the purpose of evaluating what you've already invested, we use the forty thousand dollars per table. And that covers all the items from A through L. So it gives us a reasonable estimate if we were to develop your facilities from scratch. What they would cost to develop and therefore what they're worth in market replacement cost. We update these numbers about every year. This year, some of these items took a major jump. This reflects the inflation cost that, in construction and the materials that's happened in the last twelve months. Are there any questions on this? We've done this for every facility in your system. And this is what we call the level of service, um, that you have invested so far. You can see on the left here, the different kinds of lands from what we call conservancy lands to trails to. Recreation centers to support facilities. And then all the facilities that you currently have in your systems from picnic benches and so on down to restrooms. Then the units are just what they are and the, your twenty twenty-two, excuse me, ELOS is what you've invested. Hundred and forty-two acres of land and fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine facility units. If we were to put that as standard against your current population of twenty-one thousand, then your resource conservation acres of a hundred and. Four, uh, point one acres, it'd be about almost five acres per thousand. And the same is true for everything else in that column. If we were projecting requirements and assuming we have the same ratios here to twenty fifty, where your population is expected to be thirty-five thousand. Then you would need ninety-one more acres of these kinds of mixtures and you would need another almost ten thousand of these facility units. Then we put the cost against these things based on what I showed you in the first slide there to determine what it costs and therefore what their values are. So if we were to invest the ninety-one more acres at these values, and you can see they range from about a hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred thousand for land. And by the way, these are based not on your land acreage per se, cause your successor doesn't value them. But on the lands directly adjacent to these kinds of parks. But nonetheless, you'd be investing about nineteen million dollars to get this by twenty fifty. And of all the facilities of the same ratios, you'd be investing about twenty-seven million dollars if you maintain the same ratios, or about forty-seven million total. Now you'll see that we don't think this particular ratio is what you should be in the future. This is what you've accumulated. There's some things that you have too much in maybe, and some things that you haven't developed enough. We'll get to that on the next slide. But nonetheless, we also look down here, what you've invested then, based on these ratios and these values. And you've invested approximately seventy-three million dollars in park and recreational facilities. And if we prorate that back to individuals, you've invested about three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars per person. Or for an average household, almost ten thousand dollars. These numbers are pretty typical. They're not the lowest, but they're not the highest of similar-sized cities. Are there any questions on this? And we look at what your proposed level of service should be. And this is based on the analysis that we did for every kind of facility you have in the city and where we think you should provide more of different things and where. We think you've achieved equity in some things. But on land, we think you need some more resource conservancies, as we call it. And those are the lands adjacent to the, to the creek corridors that we want to try to maintain or try to re, and, and enhance. And then for linear trails, where those trails would be on or off-road and whether they're buck creek quarters or on the highway. My athletic fields and playgrounds. This is a neighborhood park south. There's now come, become Soco Park. And recreation centers. And here's your regional versus a local community center. And then last would be support facilities for public works and yards. Now, these columns are diva- are assigned about what we think you should add. Looking at twenty forty-two, what the cost would be, therefore would have cost you to buy, to provide this total amount. And then we put in here what we call the park of recreation, open space share of that. So if we're looking at acquiring land along these creek corridors, we think parks should pay a hundred percent of that. But if we're looking at trails and some of these trails are on and off these corridors, we think the probable cost is gonna be about twenty-five percent. If we're looking at the playground, the so-called park a hundred percent. But if we're looking at the regional aquatic and rec center, for now, we're saying zero percent because you'd have a new funding source in which to do that. Potentially a metropolitan park district. If it's a local facility, a hundred percent. If it's a new parkyards, we're looking at lease. So for now, we did not calculate any amount. But for land, the total, uh, bill would be twenty-five million, but we think parks cost you about seven and a half million. Now, we did the same thing for picnic tables and where they should be, shelters and where they should be. Multipurpose off-road trails and where they should be. park trails and on-road bikeways. And the one thing under on-road bikeways is we did not presume that parks would pay those costs. We thought those would probably come through public works and on-road systems would be paid by the transportation improvement. We also looked at the playgrounds, skate dots, as we call them, to distribute equipment for skateboards throughout your park system. So the younger kids have accesses to them. Sport courts, which are really modifying some of your basketball courts so they can be pickleball as well as volleyball and basketball. Soccer fields, in some cases upgraded in this case, some of the elementary school facilities so they can support practice and competition, particularly for younger ages. The same with baseball, your rec center again, the local community center again, if that's the case, and then some of the balance parks that you've already maintained are already identified. The only ones which we've discounted from a hundred percent would be if you decide with the school district that you'll jointly improve their fields for play by a greater variety of youth organizations, including your own parks program and the same with the ball fields. But the total bill comes to two hundred and forty five million, of which we think park share would be ninety two million over the next twenty years. Any questions on this? This is a different mixture than what we proposed in the existing level of service where you simply maintain the same ratio. And you see, we're investing more in certain kinds of facilities than just raw land for land. So this is what it looks like when we take all those things and organize them by project. So this is your CFP or a draft of it and it's in the appendix. So we expect every year you'll update this depending on what you think you can do in the next coming cycle. And if you make any changes to any substance of what some of these projects could be. But we see four conservation projects. These are the creek corridors. This is their total cost. This is the park cost. We think there are fourteen trails as we've identified them. This would be the cost, total cost for the trails on the park share. These are the fifteen bikeways on lay on road, seventeen million, but parks is zero. These are the new parks, the regional aquatic center, the local community center, so called park or park south and welcome park, hundred and twenty one million. The big item here is the regional facility, but the local facilities would be twenty one million. These are park infills. The improvements you're doing at the, at the community park, Crystal View and Echo Park, Friendship Park, Jenkins Creek and So Co Park, thirty one million and park share for thirty one million. School improvements, if you decide to do that, thirty million, your share potentially depending on what your negotiations are with them, about seven million. And then the last is your pub, is your public parks yard. So the total here is ninety two million matching that, that proposed level of service. I might give you back up a little bit here. Not every city enters into an agreement with school districts about sharing or jointly developing their facilities. Probably the one we started with and did the most work with was a city of Bellevue. And they decided jointly with the school district that if they did that, reduce the demand on the park system for fields. And it also improved these fields for safety use for this kids during the, during the day. It really depends on the sites and really depends on what the city would benefit and the school district would benefit from whatever agreement you decide to do if you do it. Then the question becomes, how do we finance it? I'll show you the six year and then I'll show you the twenty year. These are your proposed expenditures and we took these out of your twenty twenty two budget. This is what you propose to spend on parks maintenance, on aquatics, on recreation and cultural arts, on parks administration. And then we've added a line for what we call repair and replacement. That means that things on your existing facilities are going to wear out in the next six years. You need to anticipate and begin to fund those replacements. This is everything from roofs to having to overlay again, your trails, to replacing irrigation systems, replacing lighting systems and so on. And we think that on six years is about fifteen percent of what that facility value is not land, but the facility improvements. So that'd be four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars per year. Then we took that ninety two million and took thirty percent of it and said, let's try to do that in six years. So it's thirty one million, but we've put a five percent inflation rate on it to project what that would be over the six years. And we've identified three alternatives, as you will see, to achieve all the same amount of money. But in six years, you're looking at a potential expenditure of about fifty nine million. Then we took your budget and said, what did you, what have you identified to go to this, to the parks improvements? Then we took out of the capital general fund, it's about eight percent. And then you have in here REIT impact fees, user fees and some property tax issues. And we've held those for zero on a minute because I'm going to show you some alternatives. But we've also kept your expansion levy, King County expansion levy for the life that's left in it. And we've anticipated that you would get some grants. Now, all of these grew up five percent except your general fund, which can only grow up one percent. And then we carry those out over the next six years. And you can see this would generate eight million. You mean you'd be short about fifty one million. So then we looked at the four options. These are the three alternatives again. The first option is how much of your recreation program costs you if it wants to recover. Right now, you're recovering about thirty three percent of what it costs for you to do programs. So we said at our alternative one, let's go for fifty percent. Two would be fifty five percent. Three would be sixty percent. Almost, most of the cities we've been working with have been trying to increase these recapture rates. And one of the issues that they've all confronted is how do we provide for low income families? And the question is, if you discount your cost recovery or reduce your fees, more people can use it, but the bulk of the people can afford it. So the other way around is it's not run a deficit, but let's provide scholarships and other ways to offset the cost for those that can't afford it. So most cities have been trying to get these numbers in at least sixty, some cases up to eighty percent. But it really also depends on what kind of programs you provide and run. But nonetheless, this would generate from eight million to ten million over that six year period. That actually be your growth impact fee. And the fee here is how much of this thirty five hundred dollars per person you've invested? Do you want to recapture from every new person that, that moves into Covington or builds a house within Covington? So we've presumed under alternative one would be sixty percent, seventy percent and eighty percent. If you've not done a fee before, usually these rates are lower because there's some hesitancy generally to charge a high fee for that, for a housing development. But on the other hand, what you realize is every new person in here is going to require that investment. And if it isn't charged on an impact fee, you charge any fee at all and then you're on the hook for the balance. So the lower this percent, the greater is your percentage to supplement that. Most of the cities we've been working with have been pushing into these categories once they've had an impact fee in place for some period of time. And keep in mind, impact fees can have waivers for elderly or waivers for affordable housing or waivers for other kinds of construction. So you can mitigate that impact depending what kind of construction you're looking at. The last would be the real estate excise tax, REIT one. It's supposedly dedicated to parks and recreation. So we've put the numbers in here for both one and two, assuming that this would be fifty percent. And hopefully that could grow a bit to fifty five or sixty percent, depending on what else that you're funding with REIT and what kind of competition it is for use of REIT funds. The last source would be a property tax levy. Basically, this levy would say whatever the balance is, we're going to put out a levy to pick up the difference. And before I leave this, I want to say your recreation cost recovery generates significant amount of money, ten million. But your growth impact fee generates twelve million. Your REIT, three point six million. So while these are significant numbers, you're still left with a deficit of between thirty million and twenty four million. If you put out a six year levy to pick up the balance here, then their costs under alternative one would be about nineteen dollars per hundred thousand or seventy dollars per an average house. This is an average existing house, not an average, not a house that's on the market. And these would be annual payments. And then our alternative three would go to about fifty eight dollars for an average house per year. Everybody still up with this? Then let's look at twenty year. Same kind of things carried out for twenty years. The difference here is that we're going to try to see if we can't finance all the ninety two million in the twenty years. The same assumptions here about general fund at one percent. And the expansion levy goes away because it's expired by now, but the grant, you still expect to get grants. So you're looking at two hundred and seventy eight million dollars over twenty years, inclusive, everything included. But generating twenty nine million, if this is the only things we, we, we have as recourse or we're about two hundred and forty nine million sure. Same ratios for the alternatives. Under the recreation cost recovery, it'd be forty to forty eight million captured. Impact fees twenty eight to thirty seven million. Excise tax fourteen to seventeen million. And now the balance would be between a hundred and sixty six thousand, a million to a hundred and forty five million. But now the rates are lower. Twenty four dollars per average house under option one, twenty one dollars under option three. The reason that these are going down is that some of these things are exponentially growing versus your costs are growing on a progressive rate. So over time, as it does that, the longer term that you go, the lower that cost is going to be. Now, property tax levies can be done as a single or a multi-year. If it's a single year, it's six years. If it's a multi-year, it's nine years. But the question is, if you put the property tax levy out there and sometimes it's called a levy lift, you can make them permanent. If that's what you declare the, the purpose to be, or you can sunset them by describing what you're trying to fund and then when it will expire. The Seattle Metro Park District did a tax levy lid lift. They said, we need forty million dollars. And as soon as you get to forty million dollars, the rate will, will sunset back to what it was before. The advantage of the property tax levy is it only takes fifty percent plus one. And it doesn't require minimum turnout. And the property tax levy can be used for more than construction. If instead of trying to only fund this category, you pick up whatever the balance holes are of all categories that you're trying to finance. So we promote the use of levies rather than bonds. Bonds can only be used for constructions and they have that sixty percent, forty percent turnout, which is very difficult to achieve versus this is much more flexible and much to do it. Now, if you do a levy, there's two ways of doing it. You can go for the whole amount is this, this specifies here and then try to balance what this ever would be with whatever the public finds acceptable. Or you can do as the city of Bellingham has done. Every six years they go for a levy and identify the greenways and the trails they want to do in that six year element. And when they've used up the six years and achieved those projects, they put out another reauthorization with another new list of six year projects. And they're on their fourth or fifth levy renewal over this time period. Now, in order to, if you're thinking about that, the key issue then is your most popular projects, the ones you need in the levies. If you take your most popular, the biggest interests or supportable projects and you fund them out of general funds or any other way, and then you end up with projects on the levy, which are not as, have as much support for, then you've kind of aced out your ability to pass this relatively easily. Are there any questions on what we presented? That's a lot. Then what I would say is this is in your plan. It's in the appendix. Appendix E financing. And G, the Growth Management Act requires in order for you to adopt the plan with any level of service, you have to prove that it's feasible financially. And what we're saying here is it's feasible financially. But this doesn't obligate you for any of these particular scenarios or even how you manage to wish to do it. And that's what something, that's something you can do on an annual basis. When you do your annual CFP, when you do your comprehensive financing, capital facilities program for all facilities. But this is a useful exercise in our opinion because it proves it's feasible. The question is, what you, what you're comfortable mixing and matching and what your public is, is, is most likely to support. Questions?
Also, any questions for Tom?
Yeah. So this is Councilmember Porter. I'm sorry, I can't raise my hand. I've got something blocking it, but is it okay if I speak or is somebody else? Yeah. So, so when we define feasible, we're just talking about it could be within that financial realm of possibility to finance this. There's really no, no benchmark that defines what feasibility is in this case.
No, your level of service is what we call subjective. The, the level of service being what you're going to invest in land and facilities and so on over time. And there are all kinds of supposed benchmarks and standards about what you should achieve, but really comes down to what you and your citizens thinks is appropriate for Covington. And likewise, your financial feasibility is, can you support that? That's all the GMA asks. GMA says, we don't want pie in the sky. You know, plans and proposals anymore. You have to at least ascertain that it can be done. And by putting this in the appendix, you can modify and do whatever you want to with it. It's an ex, uh, evaluation or assessment. It's not a mandatory requirement. Ethan, did you want to add to that?
That was a great presentation, Tom. It is a lot of information and I think we provided the, the major plan and the appendices will be online in the next week or so. So we're still kind of finalizing some of that, but nothing else to add.
Anybody else have a question for Tom or Ethan? Tom, thank you very much for bringing this and presenting it to us tonight. And Ethan, I know this is coming back to us at a future date for possible action on it.
Correct.
But Tom, thank you very much for being here tonight and presenting this wealth of information. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bet. Have a great evening.
You too.
All right. Next up is new business item number three, discussion of HB fifteen ninety funding and community care specialist Reagan and Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So as you know, this is something we talked about last year during our budget workshop about the hiring of the community care navigator. That was a recommendation from the Human Services Commission. And we put together a presentation to share with, with council. And one of the, I had a particular items wanted in that position was that that person, person be a certified mental health provider. So we went to work on that and ran into a couple of hurdles that we wanted to share with council tonight and then a pivot in how this job position could change. So first off, our insurance company, WCI A does not have medical malpractice coverage, so they would not cover this position. So that makes it very difficult if, under our current situation, if this is, if having that mental health certification was important to council, we would have to go through a new insurance provider. And obviously the insurance cost would go up to cover medical malpractice. We thought maybe we could contract this position and that would negate our problems we're having with our insurance company. We first reached out to King County to see if that's something they could provide as part of our current contract with them. And they said that it's not something that they would do. We reached out to a couple of other agencies and they expressed that it's something they were not able to do as well due to staffing shortages. So we did an overall reevaluation of the job duties and making sure that this position could meet the targeted needs that the council wanted to see happen. And really, what, what the, what came is, as you recall, this was a recommendation from the Human Services Commission was that this is a position that is intimately involved in the community, intimately involved with the work that our police officers do and helping facilitate people that need services to help them, get them and connect them to those mental health services. So that element would not change and nor to do those things is a mental health certification required. And so what, what we're proposing tonight is that this position, do all the things we're wanting it to do, go out with the police, get involved in the community, identify and work with partner, mental health providers and connect the people who are in need with those providers. And so that's, that's what we'd like to do. Another recommendation is to change the name from a community care navigator to a community care specialist. No decisions need to be made tonight by council. We Uh no decisions need to be made tonight by council. We wanted to bring this up. Give me time to think about. I know it's an important position that council cares deeply about. So Julie and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, have any questions for Reagan or Julie? Raise your hand. Oh, I don't see any hands raised. Reagan, good. Update, I guess. And Julie, thank you both. Um, all right. So seeing oh Beth.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just, uh if there's any opportunity, and I talked about this with Reagan, to find out exactly what where the um. The staffing shortage might be problematic for. Um. These organizations in the community and as I understand it, a lot of it has to do with the fact that. It's really hard to attract people to this career because the pay is not very good for the amount of schooling and that they need. If there's an opportunity to validate that and see if there are ways that we can. As a community, at least for our um city, if if hopefully expanding it to the region, there's such a dire need for more healthcare professionals in this field. And if there's a way that we can get funding to help. Make that field more appealing or sustainable for people that want to make that a career. That's just something to throw out there. Don't need an answer tonight, but.
Thank you, Beth.
Well, I I appreciate that. If there's not any other comments or questions, uh we'll go ahead and and move forward and uh this will. One of the other benefits, we're pretty confident that this will expand the applicant pool. Uh for this position and open it up quite a bit, so hopefully uh that will be uh an added benefit. So thank you, council, and thank you, Julie, for all of her wonderful work that she continues to do in this area.
Thank you, Reagan. Thank you, Julie. And uh thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up is new business item number four, consider a motion to fill a vacancy on the council's audit committee. Casey. We cannot hear you, Casey.
Casey, I recommend. I recommend dialing star six on your phone.
If if you've won, I can just cover it, Case. Okay, we'll do that. Uh as you all know, with uh the resignation of Jared, who was a member of our audit committee. Is that you on, Case?
Yep, I think I just got on.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so I didn't hear what Reagan said, but with Jared's resignation at the last council meeting, it left a vacancy in the audit committee. Um, so we were just looking for um a brave volunteer to join Jeff and Joe on reviewing all of our accounts payable and payroll vouchers. What it what it entails is generally every two weeks during our account payable cycle. We have a stack of invoices that are that are gone through and it's just really a second set of eyes or third or fourth set of eyes at this point. Just to review those invoices and. It's a real strong internal control for the city and it's also required by the state auditor's office to to have this, so. If you have any other questions or if there's anybody that's interested and wants to jump in.
So I reached out to Beth because I know even before she got on council, she was very um. Interested in seeing our vouchers and and following through. So Beth, are you still interested in um being on the audit committee?
I would be interested if, yes.
Okay. Thank you. See, I didn't have the strong armor too bad, Joe. Not like we had to do with you. Is there anybody else that would like to be on this committee or if not, then I would look for a motion to appoint council member Porter to the audit committee?
So moved.
Been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Christina to appoint council member Porter to the council's audit committee. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I think Beth would be a great addition to the team. I do recall um her interest in uh. All of those things before she was even on council, so that it's perfect fit. Thank you for um stepping up.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christine, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you, Beth, for stepping up again, and I think you'll make us proud.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint council member Porter to the council's audit committee. Call for roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
I.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
I.
Joe, vote.
Hi.
Beth, how do you vote?
Should I recuse myself or?
Can't back out now.
Oh, I know. I mean, from the voting, I'm I'll vote for myself, but I can recuse myself if that's appropriate.
No, you can vote for yourself. And I also vote I, so is unanimous to appoint council member Porter to the council's audit committee. Thank you all very much and congratulations, Beth. I actually have a lot of fun on that uh committee. I enjoy numbers. Uh next up is new business item number five, consider an ordinance amending chapter three. Dot five zero of the Covington Municipal Code authorizing an admission tax increase. Ethan.
Thank you. Um. Just a couple notes on this item during the City Council and Arts Commission uh joint meeting in two in twenty twenty, the Arts Commission proposed that the City Council consider an increase to the city's admission tax to support public art. Uh the City Council received a brief presentation on the topic at its twenty twenty-one. Annual summit and then discussed it at the November ninth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. Two requests were made by the City Council uh at that November meeting. Uh the first was to increase the city's admission tax from two and one-half percent to five percent um and uh. Uh proposed ordinance with this changes provided um for the council's consideration tonight. And the second request was to provide an option that would allow the admission tax revenue revenue to be allocated to fund public art. Uh and then the recommendation for this is uh to establish a public art reserve account for allocating admission tax revenue. Um, that's not an action item. I don't believe you need to take tonight. That was something that would just be done during the the budget process. Otherwise, there's really not more of a presentation on this tonight as it's a follow-up from that November ninth meeting. I'm of course happy to answer any questions if the council has any. Otherwise, it's just up for council discussion and consideration of the proposed ordinance.
Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, Ethan, for the reminders of why this is before us tonight. My question is, if we're already not. If if we get zero percent of this two and a half percent already, what's five percent of zero gonna actually get us? And we all understand that there's future things coming down the line, but um. I think a movie theater is still five or six years down the road. And other options for this are still fi- uh five plus years down the road. What what's the benefit of for us doing this tonight versus waiting four or five years?
Yeah, that's a good point, uh council member. Um. You know, there is no admission tax revenue of any sort coming into the city currently. There's just um so two and a half percent or five percents of zero, still zero, so. Um that point is taken. I think the the benefit would just be if the city wants to, uh if the council wants to establish a five percent rate now. It would then be effective whenever uh there would be a business that would have to submit admission tax revenue.
Any other questions for Ethan? All right. Thank you. Um council before us is the oper- um option to pass an ordinance. In substantial form as that attached here to. Authorizing an increase of the city's admission tax to five percent. This council was to take action tonight.
So moved.
Second.
By Jennifer and seconded by Sean to pass an ordinance in substantial form as that ha- attached. Here to authorizing an increase of the city's admission tax to five percent. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Absolutely. I recall one of the words I used to talk about um our current financial sys- uh. Stability and I believe the word I used was proactive. This is absolutely proactive. Um this is one of the examples of us. Looking ahead to the future, ensuring that we have sustainable art funding and art funding arts. Yes, I know there's nothing now, but there will be and we will be on top of it. And it's in line with what our neighboring cities um are doing as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sean, would you like to speak your second?
Yeah, I I concur with that and and I think um. Passing this now is a a good way of putting down a a marker for the city to say we're supporting. Public art um and when these admission facilities do come online, um movie theater, that sort of thing. Uh we'll already have it in place um and be able to s- support additional art and I. Kind of like what Jennifer said, I like the idea of uh art, supporting art, so uh I'm gonna vote for this.
Thank you. So anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Joe.
So um I'm all about art paying for art. I think that's wonderful. But I'm also not for doing something that's not gonna help us. In the immediate and the immediate is within the next two or three years. We're not having movie theater in the next two or three years. We might get lucky and have the new aquatic center in the next uh five years as well, and I don't know if we can use that funding for there. But if it's not doing anything for us and within the next two years. We can come back to this, so this is this for me is a no because right now all we're doing is more paperwork that's gonna do nothing for us.
Now, anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, I will call for a roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
I.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
I.
Joe, how do you vote?
Nay.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I also vote I. It is five to one to pass an ordinance as substantial form. Thank you all very much. Next up is new business item number six, to consider a resolution to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds for a SoCo Park project. Ethan.
Thank you. Uh this uh agenda is uh to consider a resolution uh to seek grant funds from Washington. Uh State Recreation Conservation Office. This is a requirement for us to put in grant applications. Um uh we are proposing submitting two grant applications to RCO. Uh related to SoCo Park. These would actually both be for. Uh acquisitions of the two parcels that are currently under contract for the city to purchase. Uh one would be for the grant program, Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, local parks category, and the other would be for a land and water concert. Conservation Futures Grant. Um it is important to to recognize that uh if these grants are awarded, they do come with a set of commitments and obligations for the city. Um that are captured in the grant funding agreements and a sample of those was was included in the um. Council packet. These are unsimilar to other RCO grant agreements that the city has entered into for other projects. Uh including SoCo Park. Um as well as Jenkins Creek Park and Covington Community Park, but um they do come with certain requirements. Uh each of those grants do uh could possibly reimburse up to fifty percent of eligible acquisition costs. Uh we're estimating the cost of those two acquisitions. Uh would total around one point six to one point seven million dollars. That includes land costs, uh professional services and a and demo uh and removal of the structures. So um. The other thing I'll I'll note is just uh some people may be wondering about the sequence of events because. Uh the city is likely gonna um have the option to close on that uh sooner than the grant funding would be available. Uh and the city has submitted a request. It's called a waiver of retroactivity to RCO. Um and uh that would have to be approved, but then it allows that grant funding to be able to be applied retroactively to. Previous costs, but the city would have to. Pay for those properties upfront with the option possibly to get reimbursement. Um. And with that, that's really um, you know, uh. Uh all the presentation is for this item and then I guess I can uh once council considers that, I can go on to the next one, which is for separate RCO grant.
Council, have any questions for Ethan? Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Ethan. I appreciate that. I I assume um that both of these grant requests went. Through the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning Commission? And if so, what were the what were the votes or the what was the feedback?
Sure, um yeah, for due to time constraints, um those haven't gone to. Uh I have I have briefed the Parks and Recreation Commission uh on that at their last meeting. I don't think they took any formal action, but I think they're supportive of of the um applications. Uh and this isn't something that we've typically taken to the planning commission. It doesn't ob- this 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 um. Resolution really authori- you know, is an acknowledgement that we're applying for grants and also authorizes uh. In this case, city staff to kind of sign documents and and whatnot for the application. But a a grant agreement would come back to the the city for for consideration that could certainly go back to the Parks Commission and council at that time, if a grant award happened.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Ethan tonight? All right. Thank you, Ethan, for that presentation. Um before us tonight, council, we have a possibility to adopt a resolution. It says, having found that this action is necessary in routine. Uh to adopt a resolution in substantial form is that attached here to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds. For SoCo Park Project. This council was to take action tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Beth and seconded by Christina. To adopt a resolution substantial form as that attached here to. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh it's just a great opportunity for us to. Get those additional funds so that we can move our parks program forward and provide some uh needed services for the community.
Thank you, Beth. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Just that it is necessary and absolutely routine and I think it's a responsible thing of the city to look for grant funding. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, having found that this action is necessary in routine, it's been s- moved and seconded to adopt a resolution in substantial form as that attached here to. To seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds for SoCo Park Project. Call for a roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
I.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
I.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I also vote I as unanimous. To adopt this resolution. Thank you all very much. Moving on to new business item number seven. Consider a resolution to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds. For an Eco Park uh project. Ethan.
Yeah, so this is a similar uh agenda item to the previous one, but for a different project. This would be for Eco Park or East Covington Park. Uh the council may remember the city uh acquired that property in early twenty twenty-one. It was about five acres purchased from the Cornerstone Church. The city did obtain a waiver of retroactivity from RCO at the time of that acquisition and so is eligible for. Um grant funding um from the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program Local Parks category. Um uh in that, you know, it's gonna be a smaller amount. It would be fifty percent of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars or around that amount. Uh but it still would be grant funding coming back to the city. And um I kind of covered all the the other points previously, so with that, I'll just um leave it to the council if there's any questions.
Council, have any questions for Ethan on East Covington Park? Okay, before us um tonight, council is to possibility. Um having found that this action is necessary in routine, the possibility to adopt a resolution in substantial form. Is that attached here to to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds. For an East Covington Park Project. This council wished to take action tonight.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Christina and seconded by Joe. To adopt a resolution in substantial form as that attached here to to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds for an East Covington Park Project. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Joe, would you like to speak your second?
Not tonight.
Okay. Having found that this action is necessary in routine, it's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution in substantial form, is that attached here to to see Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds for an Eco Park Project? I'll call for a roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye as unanimous to adopt this resolution. Thank you all very much. Next up is new business item number eight, which is to authorize city manager to enter into one Washington memorandum of understanding between Washington municipalities regarding allocation of opioid litigation funds for local jurisdictions. Mark, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wegner, and good evening, council. I'll keep this pretty brief. This was originally on your consent agenda. But we pulled it off because we were able to finalize the exhibit that was sent out to you yesterday and wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to ask any questions if necessary. Just a little bit of background for the public, the City of Covington, along with many other jurisdictions throughout Washington, have been approached by a law firm representing 29 Washington jurisdictions that are litigating litigating multiple lawsuits against pharmaceutical companies for their alleged role in creating and perpetuating the opioid crisis in the country. And as part of that process, the litigating, the law firm that's litigating this on behalf of those cities has asked other cities to join in, and so they can speak with one voice on behalf of all the cities in Washington to be able to work out a settlement agreement between the pharmaceutical companies and the litigating jurisdictions, which would ultimately result in the city receiving a defined percentage of whatever the settlement funds are going to be. So the what the MOU essentially sets how funds will be allocated, but not the specific amount that will be determined at a later date through negotiation. So and the reason why this again is before you is because when we read when this was originally put in the packet, the King County was trying to determine whether they were going to enter into their own specific formula for distributing funds amongst King County jurisdictions. At the end of the day, and just recently, they decided that they weren't going to pursue that right now. And so the default formula in the MOU will apply. And this doesn't foreclose the opportunity for King County to seek regional agreements and regional cooperation in the future. But at this time, the MOU as originally presented with that default formula is what's going to apply. So but nothing has really changed from what's in the packet, other than adding the Exhibit C and having that finalized. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this.
Council have any questions for Mark? All right. Thank you, Mark, very much for bringing this up to us. Seeing no questions before us, council is to authorize the city manager to execute a one Washington MOU between Washington municipalities in substantial form, is that presented? This council wish to take action tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Joe and seconded by Sean to execute the one Washington MOU to authorize the city manager to execute the one Washington MOU. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think it's the right thing we to do. It's a little bit of extra money that we can get to help with the city, but it's also we're Washington's doing the right thing for this. So I'm all for it.
Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I'll just add that by signing this MOU, we have an opportunity to get a seat at the table in these negotiations. So I'm going to support it as well.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Mark?
Just to clarify, this doesn't actually, we're not being represented by the law firm in the litigation. And this this isn't creating a seat at the table for the City of Covington. We will automatically be given a portion of whatever the settlement funds are based upon the formula. But in order for us to get a seat at the table, we would need to litigate this on our own or as a consortium with other cities. So this is just entering into an MOU saying that if if and when a settlement is reached, the city will be allocated a certain portion of funds.
Thank you for that, Claire. Yeah.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you, Mark. All right, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute a one Washington MOU memorandum of understanding between Washington municipalities in substantial form, is that presented? I'll call for roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye. It has been authorized. It has been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the one Washington between Washington municipalities in substantial form, is that presented? Thank you all very much. Moving, that concludes all of our new business. Next up is to look at future agenda items, looking at our future agenda. Okay. Sorry, my computer screen just went everywhere. So does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda? All right, seeing nobody show anything are we do have on next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, May 4th is our Tri-City Meeting. Then on May 10th at 5:40, we do have a commission interview. At 6 o'clock, we have a joint study session with our Economic Development Council and the Chamber Board. And then our regular council meeting starts at 7:00. With that, we'll move into council staff comments. We'll start with Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to add tonight.
Thank you, Adam. Ethan?
Just thank you for consideration of the items on the agenda for Parks and Rec tonight. Thank you. That's all.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Hi, good evening, council. I just want to say thank you for a great study session today. That was really fun exercise to go through with all of you. I really appreciate the timeliness and the thought put into it. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Thanks, Selena. Casey? You're on mute, Casey.
There we go. Sorry. Just to let you know, our small business grants are still rolling in. We've received 11 to date, and we have issued five checks totaling $25,000. So that's great. We're starting to get some of those funds out into the community. And then also on a not so exciting note, we did receive notice from our auditor that they will be in City Hall in the next couple of weeks. So our last year's audit is getting ready to start. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Regan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know, as we've been during the feasibility with the community center, we partnered with Maple Valley. As you know, it's been quite an extensive process. In our last subcommittee group meeting, Maple Valley seemed a bit hesitant. And so what we said to them is we need to know if if you're in on this, because then we can know to move forward. I got word back. I know Jeff was called as well today that Maple Valley is pulling out of that partnership of moving forward with a community center. So it's unfortunate, as you know, a lot of time and effort was put into assessing the sites in Maple Valley. A lot of money was spent on that. But they felt it wasn't a priority for them at this time. So that's where we're at. I I informed Ethan about it as well this afternoon, so we'll we'll get together and start putting together some options. But that's something we're going to have to talk about as a council and consider how we can move forward with this, if that's still something the council is wanting to do. And I know that's something we talked about in our strategic planning meeting earlier this evening as well, that that's a priority and something we want to see. So but also, as you know, we have our annual Tri-Cities meeting next week on May 4th. You, I think you may have seen the agenda. If you haven't yet, that's fine, but we did have an update on there of the community center because that was a partnership between the cities, but we'll remove that item from the agenda. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Regan. And that'll come back to council at a future date to discuss that, correct?
The community center?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight, and I have nothing further. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Krista?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to check in on the Tri-City meeting. I do want to make sure that everyone received that on their calendar. I've received a few responses that some council members will be attending, but I want to make sure that I know if somebody will not be attending. So if you can please respond to me or even just send me a quick email if you are not able to attend, just for room setup purposes. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Sean?
I don't have anything to add tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Christina?
Yeah, I just want to say it was a wonderful time being at Makers Market on Saturday. I also spent way too much money, but they were such special little very original pieces on everything that I bought. Thank you to all of the booths. Thank you to our entire community who was there, and it was just a phenomenal time. Thanks.
Thanks, Christina. Jennifer?
I wanted to thank Carla for the great state of the city videos, and I can't wait to see those released to the public. I should say I can't wait, actually, but you know what? We all did a great job. So kudos to everyone, really. At least for me, it was very nerve wracking. So I can only assume that maybe some of you had similar feelings, but the overall product looks great, and I really love that we all got to be a part of it. And I did go to the underwater Easter egg thing at the pool. It was packed. It was crazy, but very well run, very safe. The kids had a blast. Karma was there. And lastly, I will not be at Tri-Cities. I think I told you a long time ago, Krista, that I was likely not going. And I will not be there. I'll be at my goddaughter's graduation out of state. So enjoy on my behalf, please.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe?
A couple of things I want to thank Christina for going to Skip for me as I was traveling through central Tennessee at that time, and her and I have had a discussion. I would like council to know that in the three plus years Skip has been around, nothing has been done besides create more bureaucracy. We have now created, we've created multiple committees, and all of them are just doing talking to create more meetings. I am I did reach out to another Skip committee member from the executive board and spoke with them about feelings and seeing if I was just having feelings misplaced on there. So I will be reaching out to other Skip members to see how we can move things along to start to better our regional area in terms of homelessness and making sure we can get people into shelter. And with that being said, I would I'll keep council informed. I will like I will let you know my feelings on this as the representative for Covington. I feel though, right now, that I need to be completely honest with you, and I do not see Skip putting into putting money into any projects this year, which would be four years of just collecting dues and not having anything to show for it. But again, I will keep everyone updated. With that being said, also, it's great to be back in Washington. I was I enjoyed my vacation and having a council meeting from my mom's house, which she kind of found funny. But other than that, I want to say I just finished another class, and I still have a 3.97 GPA. So if anyone had told me that 20 years ago, I would have called you crazy. Other than that, I hope you all have a wonderful evening. I can't wait to see everyone in person minus Jennifer next week at Tri-Cities.
Thank you, Joe. Beth?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I unfortunately did not get a chance to go to Makers. We had a big event that night I was planning for, and as I was driving by at like 3:30, I was forlornly looking because Carlos was on stage, and there was a guitarist, and it looked like it was active and fun, and it was a beautiful day, and I just I wanted to stop, but I just didn't have the time. So I'm glad everybody that went enjoyed it, and I'm looking forward to the one in the fall. So definitely have it on my calendar. I did, however, get an opportunity to attend the the prayer, the leadership prayer breakfast meeting last week at Real Life Church, and it was it was very moving to show people coming together to support community leaders, first responders, those that were in the education field. You know, essential workers. It was it was really touching. A touching program. So the other, the final thing I want to talk about is the safety subcommittee. You know, as you all know, we're looking at policing and safety and resources for our community, and the subcommittee has met four times. We initially, we started out with the we're in the stage of the fact finding. As you all know, we've we've done some BNO surveys, and Joe, Sean, and Regan have been reaching out to other city cities in the area to find out what they're doing, looking at different options for us. We will be presenting a report as a new business item at the next meeting on the 10th. So we'll have a little more information there for you all. I know we're all anxious to hear about what we've dug up so far. And then I guess the only other thing, we've all received the invitation, but there is a town hall that will be hosted regarding a BNO tax potential, and that will be hosted by the Covington Chamber. It'll be at City Hall on Monday, the 27th of June from 5:30 to 7:30, I believe. So that might be a good thing to put on your calendars if you're able to make it, just to connect with that will be specifically for the businesses. And then we're looking at, we'll come to council with some suggestions and thoughts about how we can also engage with the public in a different forum. So some more news at 11. We'll have more information for you all in two weeks.
Thanks, Beth. I'm not sticking around till 11 o'clock tonight, but.
No, no.
I you were doing, I understand. Thank you, Beth.
Did I say something? Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, no, next week, two weeks.
Regan?
I thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because there was talk about the subcommittee bringing a report back to council. What we plan to present on the 10th is an update of what's been happening and kind of our next steps. There will be a final report kind of at the end of our work, but just wanted to clarify in case council was thinking this was the the final report.
Thanks, Regan. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Regan. I attended the prayer meeting also with Beth and Regan. Very it was very nice for the first one in Covington. It was National Day of Prayer and electeds. Our public safety, we had quite a few people that showed up, and it was very nice, even from our schools. And it was nice that we had some people from Covington there. I was invited for Black Diamond, Maple Valley and Covington. So Makers Market on Saturday was a great event. I went around to each of the vendors and thanked them for being there. They were so ecstatic to be able to get out in public and be able to sell and see. I mean, I was there. I only planned on being there for an hour. I was there for over two hours talking with everybody, and it was just a great event. State of the city, yes. What an awesome idea to include everybody in this. I I was ecstatic when Regan and Carla brought that idea up, and I just, I think it's great to have all of you speaking during that event. Tri-City meeting next week is May the 4th. Sean Kelly told me he was getting me a Chewbacca outfit, which there is not one in my size, unless it's the original one. But I am wearing a Star Wars T-shirt under my sports jacket. So I encourage you, I even asked council member Dunn if he would wear a asked council member Dunn if he would wear a Star Wars, and I have not received a response yet, but we'll see if he shows up with one. Jacques Imperial said that they were going to try and get him to wear one. So SCA and AWC, AWC Conference in June, registration opens tomorrow. Let Krista know once it opens up. If you're interested in going, it'll be in Vancouver. And I don't know if you have heard, but our own SCA Executive Director, Deanna Dawson, is now going to be the Executive Director of AWC. So it's a big step for her. She is leaving SCA in a much better place than when she started ten years ago. And I can see her taking AWC to new levels as well. I am on the Executive Committee for SCA, so we are working on next steps for what leadership will be for SCA. And I'll keep you posted on that. That is all I have tonight. So next is our second opportunity for public comment. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, and we do not have an executive session tonight, this council meeting is adjourned at eight fifty six PM. Thank you all very much for a great evening, great discussion, and I hope you all have a great weekend, and we'll see you next Wednesday at Tri-City if you're there. Good night, everybody.